Okay, I would like to call.
Greg was kicking this under the table.
January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty. Comprehensive Plan Work Session Number Twenty. Oh, my word, to order, I know. Heather, could you please call the role?
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Clea?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Schaller?
Here.
Okay, um, our business today is looking at Chapter Eight, the Commercial and Economic Development Chapter. This is our first run through it, so I expect we'll have a fairly robust conversation.
On the first few pages, I'm really not going, I'm gonna hit a couple of highlights and move on unless you've got something you want to add or correct. We updated the commercial projects. I'm sure we didn't get everything, so if you see one that's not on the list, write it on your list, or let me know, and we'll add it to it. The interesting thing, I thought, is the hotels and lodgings. We upgraded all that information. But the hotel section, I thought, was very interesting because we now have three thousand two hundred and seventy-one rooms and sixty-four rooms in B and Bs in our one short-term rental and two hundred and eighty-three units of timeshares. But what I thought was really interesting is since the last comp plan, there are thirteen hundred hotel rooms that have either been demolished, converted to another use, or one of those. So I thought that was, that's a lot of hotel rooms in five years that has changed use.
Sign of the times.
Uh, I think, yeah, that's impressive. Uh, I think, uh, it'd be worth concluding this section with, um, a statement of where we are today in terms of occupancy, uh, to indicate that there's more to be done, uh, in terms of getting supply and demand in better balance. I, I know Michelle has some of that data, and I assume you have access to the same data in terms of, um,
Right.
I think she gets that out of taxes, right, out of tax revenue.
We have.
And, and, sorry, just for the sake of this discussion, the number is appallingly low. Uh, it's between twenty-five and fifty percent. It's one of the lowest in the state, our occupancy rate for hotels.
I think it's somewhere in forty-three percent in summertime and a lot less in
Right.
this time of year.
Right.
But, yeah, I think I can get that from.
Great. I think that'd be important to have in here.
Okay.
And, and, and where it ranks in the state, too. So, I mean, just a number is just a number to people, but if we can say we are, um, you know, on the bottom quartile or whatever for the state in terms of occupancy, that'd be useful.
Is more sounding, but useful.
It's grim. I mean, it really is, it's a serious problem.
So one of the first sections is the downtown planning area, and this map has been updated from the map that you have. I had in your original packet, uh, Seeler, our GIS person, has updated the information for me now. There were a couple of lots that the buildings weren't on the one you had, and I had her go in and put them back in. So that's been updated. On the next page, this map also has been updated. So updated all the information on the left-hand side to reflect, uh, the new totals for the map. Pretty close to what we had previously, not huge changes there. We did add mixed use because we have some mixed-use buildings in the downtown now that we didn't have in the last comp plan. So you'll see that total in there. These are basically the same as what we had in the previous comp plan. I highlighted the Merchant Square and the University Commercial just to, those titles, just to pull them out. Tried to go through and find all the William and Marys and get it correct. Sure, there's one or two still hanging in there somewhere. But we've tried to find all of those. Same on, I added maps, which you may or may not have noticed, to each of the categories. In the previous comp plan, we did not have maps. We took pictometry and outlined the areas sort of based on the description of the areas, like Merchant Square. So as you can see, there's a map now that sort of corresponds to Merchant Square, which I thought helps individuals who are not familiar with the city as to where the actual area is. And I did that for all of them, the commercial area, the municipal center, North Henry and South Henry Street. So I thought that was something, and you, and the buildings are on there when you do it in pictometry. So it really helps people, I think, when they look to see where that area is and the buildings, what they're looking at when we are describing it in text.
These, um, I, I mean, I recognize all the names of these areas. These are not really official designations, though, right?
No.
They're just sort of our working terms for these different.
This is, these are terms that have been used in the last two or three comp plans. So it's sort of continuing those areas into this comp plan. So unless you have anything in those, I'll move into the downtown vibrancy plan. So what I did in that is I took the vibrancy plan and I sort of highlighted the sections and paraphrased those into the comp plan. So I, I took the, like, the retail highlights and I listed those. I also did the food highlights in the plan. I took pictures and those types of things you'll see throughout the document and added them to the comp plan. And we'll go in detail in this in a minute, so unless you have a lot of comments on that, those first few pages, I've got a lot of, the triangle building is, uh, area.
Uh, maybe before we, just before we go into, uh, the details, I feel like it needs to be, the vibrancy plan, um, it needs to be sort of set up a little bit, um, not more clearly, just a little bit differently, I think. Because there's a, there's a combination of really useful data that came out of the, the vibrancy plan. And then there's a combination of recommendations that the comprehensive plan may or may not really agree with,
or we may not really agree with. Right.
Um, and so, and, and people already have read it, and, and many people point to it and say, well, you know, you're doing all this stuff in the vibrancy plan, and, and I always feel like I always have to explain to people that this is simply a consultant's, um, analysis.
And that's where we're gonna go in pretty deep
Okay.
detail in a few minutes.
Well, I guess, I, I'm just thinking that at the outset, something that says, um, the vibrancy plan consists of a set of consultant's recommendations or consultant's analysis of, um, the opportunities or something. I mean, I, I just, I, I think the comprehensive plan needs to distance itself just slightly more from those recommendations right here at the outset, um, so that it's not read by somebody who's moving too quickly as, um, actual recommendations of the Planning Commission. If you see the, I just didn't see that in the opening
Okay.
bit here in, in a way that I think, um, it ought to be. Which is not to criticize it necessarily, but simply to say, um, this is not, um, to be taken as, this must be understood as, as something other than a recommendation of the comprehensive plan. I guess, this, this is a subtle distinction, I realize, but I, I do think something at the outset that makes that clear would be, uh, useful.
And, and for me, I mean, just amplifying what Jeff's saying is that, to me, I saw this section with the vibrancy plan as analogous to Sarah Stafford's Housing Survey or study. And so we actually already have a template for how we really highlighted it at the very beginning. The next X number of pages, or until we get to page X, this is the Stafford Plan. And so I think that we need to have a similar thing here, that this next chunk of information is this consultancy plan, and then we take back the narrative at some point, and it's bookended as a start and a stop.
Yeah, that's a, that's a nice analogy. I think that's exactly right.
Okay.
I also noticed some of the, um, the, the retail highlights, I think some of those are specific to us. And I think, as I recall, some of them are just sort of national trends, if that's, if I remember correctly. And so it would be a good idea maybe to distinct, to make that distinction here. Some of those national trends, I think, don't necessarily apply locally.
To us.
So on this page, the vibrancy plan basically talks about mixed-use buildings, which we do allow, creating open space in prime locations, uh, creating street bounce, which is the reason for you to go across the street to another location, adding street trees, shade trees, and city hosting more events downtown. For the triangle, and the triangle is, the, the vibrancy plan envisions the triangle area as an entertainment area with street scape improvements, one-way traffic flows, gateway signage, smaller vendor pavilions anchored by an urban grocery or library. It recommends flush roadways, removable bollocks, clay pavers on roads and sidewalks, and vendor pavilions. City Park. The main thing I highlighted in the city park for a planning commission consideration was, what do you think of the one-way loop around City Square? So basically, what they're looking at is you would come down Boundary Street, go around the loop in front of the community building, come back around so that middle section of Boundary Street would be cut off possibly with some feature in the middle of Boundary Street as it currently exists.
But you would turn, turn right into the parking lot for the, uh, community building and go around it and come out. Same with the library. Now, that's a one-way street already. The other way. I guess you could come in this way and go in front of this building and go back around by the library.
Right.
I think that's fine for events. I'm not sure that's a permanent solution.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we, we went through this, we went through these items the, the first time, and I think there was consensus on a few items like that, which is to say, on, on the park, makes all the sense in the world to do a version of what we already do, which is to shut streets down strategically for special events, but to leave them open, you know, the rest of the year. I, I, I don't, um, I would, I would not personally endorse this idea of, of, um, you know, looping traffic around in this way for, I, I think, occasional benefit. I think there are other improvements that we could make that would have a better payoff than, than that personally. And, and, you know, the, the second thing in here, of course, is, um, the city's favorite thing to argue about, which is the, the Goodwin, well, it's not called Goodwin Square here, but, you know, turning Merchant Square parking into a, into a park. This is another one where I think we just, we don't want to be seeming to endorse these ideas. We do need a little bit of distance, more distance with some, from some than from others, um, in the comprehensive plan.
We did endorse that idea twice.
Well, we endorsed, yeah, we endorsed a version of it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we endorsed a version of it. But, uh, oof.
Two versions.
Right. Yeah, okay.
See, yeah, it does, it does seem like we're, we're incorporating a lot of that into it, that we're gonna have to then later say, you know, some of these, you know, the, I'm wondering, and we already have the whole thing as an appendix. Now we're bringing so much of it in. And, and it, it almost, as, as Jeff was saying, it kind of becomes, you know, it, it sort of becomes part of, it, it, integrated in the plan, maybe a little too much for my, my level of.
Yeah.
I think they're, they're right on, on point with it because it, it's a study, not really a plan.
Right.
Um, and I think delineating that difference is really important. This is, these are suggestions that somebody, not necessarily from here, came up with and thought, these are some options for you, have them in the back of your mind as you're developing things. The, the notion of permanently closing off Boundary Street or any part of it seems foreign to me. For special events, that, that can make sense so that it becomes one unified area. But especially with what I believe is going to be some redevelopment of this block, with, uh, public safety buildings in the library, um, those things, that needs to be figured into the much bigger picture, so that we can really come up with a real plan on how this block is going to be utilized and efficient ways to close the street. But making it a closed street and driving through parking lots to get somewhere, that's not gonna bring more people down here. It's gonna drive them away. We want them to still function in this space, but for the events, we want them to be inviting.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we, I, I like that point. And I'm wondering if we can take then some of this text that's drawn from the study, and, yeah, like, like James said, sort of say, okay, go to the appendix if you want the full details of it. And here's how it relates to some other things that are going on in this same space. You know, we don't need to go into a lot of detail maybe about the, the city buildings planned, but at least sort of lay the foundation for what one of the recommendations is at the end, which is, draws from Jeff's point last week of needing sort of this master plan idea. And so I think maybe some discussion of the need to coordinate that city building with some of the ideas and thoughts and considerations from the study could be a good use of this text instead, or, you know, in, in place of some of study text.
I think what I could do is, once we get through it and get a idea of what the commission wants to support, I can revise the text to reflect those points. But I think for this draft, it was important for me to give you an idea of what the plan says, try to get the commission's feel for what, think of those points in the plan because take for existence, street improvements, those types of things. If we really want to do that, we need to show that in the plan because then that gives us the gateway to be able to get grant money for road improvements. So we really need to think about, that's why I'm, I want to make sure we touch on certain points because if we really think it's important that we want to completely redo all the streets, close streets off and look for an opportunity to have some funding for that other than city money, we need to have that information specifically spelled out into the comp plan. So I don't have a problem with, once we go through the first time, if I can get a feel for what the commission would like to include in the vibrancy plan, I could take and pull stuff out and rewrite it, that doesn't bother me. I just want to make sure, uh, I hit the highlights of stuff that I know people are talking about and people are thinking about, and getting the commission's, uh, input into those decisions so that I can write it in the plan, so that in the next five years, if we want to do those things, the plans sort of support that. I can take out probably fifty percent or more of what you're seeing in here today, but I want to make sure we talk about it.
Yeah, I, I think we can, um, the, the, the things that we do think are good ideas, um, we can say, you know, and then reference that section in the, in the plan and send it, send them to that. I, I'm a little concerned also about, you know, because you, just in that, um, phrase or that sentence that you, or the paragraph that you gave us just then, that you were saying, you used the word plan, 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 plan. And I was like, okay, which one is she talking about? Is she talking about the, and, and to Jeff's point, you know, that, the vibrancy is, you know, that's a recommendation, you know? So we're, I mean, this is the plan.
Right.
That's not, that's just a recommendation to inform the planning process. So we need to be real consistent, so I think, as, as Jeff said, people don't look at this and, you know, misunderstand
Yeah.
you know, what's our, our recommendation versus what's being recommended to the city.
And I suspect we could include what we feel is a good idea
Right.
and just to not include the other at all.
If the commission thinks certain things need to be in the plan, if you would let me know, then I can rewrite that section and say that the vibrancy plan is, the whole plan is in the appendix text. The, you know, the planning commission reviewed the plan and recommends.
A, B, and C.
Yeah.
Right, could be that simple.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
But at least I think then people will understand that we actually looked at certain things in the plan and either like it or don't support it, or whatever we want to do. But I gotta put it up on the screen to get us there, I think. Yeah, if the commission doesn't want all of this information in, I don't have a problem pulling it up. That's easy to do.
It's kind of there twice with the appendix, so.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's practical to, um, refer to the, the vibrancy plan as the vibrancy plan by X, Y, Z, so that really delineates that this is a plan that was done by somebody other than this board.
By a vendor, yeah.
Out of town suggestion. That's the definition, that's the legal definition of an expert, somebody from out of town.
Well, so do you want us to just kind of go through these?
Yeah.
Section by section?
Then just give me the which you think is good, what you think is not, you don't support, and that helps me to.
I mean, we've, I think we've reviewed the, the Merchant Square Park enough that it seems sensible to leave, to leave this in here. I think, um, that this plan is quite different from, uh, and then more specific in some ways with the roadway, the way the roadway runs, um, there's no loop.
Right.
And it cuts straight through, um, uh, I, I feel like we ought to be general about that.
Well, see, I would take the picture out if the commission thinks.
Yeah.
I would take the, I would basically say if the commission thinks the P three parking lot has the potential to be a public plaza, subject to, uh, the details, the street design, the street connections, parking, you know, all of that, we could put that in there. But at least if someone was looking at doing that in the future, the plan sort of says,
Yeah.
it's okay, but it's, you've got to think of these other things.
Right, and we heard.
And if we don't have that picture in there, then they don't necessarily have to do that.
I think this is a case when less detail is better than more.
Right.
And, and we heard so much about parking. Just writing the plaza with some parking, I think, is enough to say, uh, yeah, we, we think this is a nice idea. Here's what it needs, rather than showing something where somebody could sit there and count parking space.
Right.
Say something, should we, should we prefer, you know, maybe make that sentence just a little bit longer, so, you know, provided the concerns expressed by the, you know, public about parking are fully addressed, something like, something like that, or?
I don't know.
Just to, just to, just to, just to show that we're, you know, very sensitive to.
That we're aware that we've had these, uh,
Yeah.
you know, multitude of public meetings. Somehow, this is a, this is a, I think, a more formal document than that kind of, uh, reflective statement to something. I also see that this is draft one, and we're already really churning it up. So I think that, you know, we're gonna see draft two and probably draft three of this, and so maybe some of that fine tuning, when we see how this is pieced together, might be better served at that time.
Possibly something in the recommendation.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, what I put in here was basically the sections that I thought were pertinent to planning commission discussion and decisions. We can take, and like I said before, we can take out and, and reduce it considerably if that's what we want to base on, I gotta give us something to start with.
Yeah.
Right.
Should we talk about city park a little bit more? I mean, I, I think, I don't, I don't want to speak for the group, but I think some of us would say that the amenities and things that are mentioned could be, um, worth endorsing or recommending, but perhaps not the permanent change in traffic flow around it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I think the amenities, I think the idea of having, um, creative and flexible ways to route traffic would be something that I think that would be nice to have. I mean, if we were to redo the road, I mean, that's once every ten to fifteen-year time in terms of doing that. So, I mean, the idea that there could be ways to reconfigure it and, you know, like, bollards that could be there or not, kind of things that you would be able to move things around, um. I think, so, I mean, to me, I, I don't want to on the fly come up with, I don't want to have a permanently one-way road thing, but I don't think on the fly we should say how it should be done, but just maybe a statement of like, a creative evaluation of the flow of traffic and how to redo that roadscape or something like that would be something that I would support, just because we need to think about it more than.
Yeah, I would mention that the stage, I believe, was part of the TDF funding.
Yes, and, and so we now have a stage.
And it's a portable stage, so.
Yes, that's been acquired.
So that would be used probably in this area when needed. Okay, I think I can get something from those two sections.
Since we're going backwards, um, do we want to talk a little bit more about the triangle and the suburban grocery store? And the pop-ups along there?
Kind of, kind of depends on what we think, or, I mean, because as Carolyn said, there, there are things that, that, um, that, uh, we, we, if we mention, whether we have to mention if we're interested in funding, you know, in maximizing the funding options. So I think, you know, the things like the street scape and the signage and, um, I, I don't know about, I, I really don't like getting into the grocery and library level of detail with that. But, uh, I, I, any, anything, anything that's sort of infrastructure, um, you know, road sidewalks, signage kind of things, I think that those are, those seem like good recommendations, just to
Definitely.
to, just to have them in here so that, uh, you have that option.
I feel like the, the creation of a road that really invites, um, pedestrian traffic to go from Prince George Street and the Goodwin Building all the way down to Richmond Road, and doing that street scape project that really makes it very pedestrian-friendly and delineates it differently. There are so many other options on how to get to those destinations, um, car-wise, so that that section of street can really become very pedestrian-friendly. There are just enough parallel roads to where that can be nice. And if, if that does become a, a raised level road, then it also creates a little bit of a calming effect as the cars cross it. So things that make that a raised pedestrian road, I find very, uh, inviting and, and, and good. And I think that is a great step in the right direction to creating that, uh, walkable venue, if you will. And should help the triangle building itself, in whatever capacity it, it stays in, uh, but.
Yeah, so, um, I think that that goes along with other things we've talked about with regard to different downtown area, um, in different, in different sections of the comp plan. And so I, I think that I would support the idea that there's a statement of, um, supporting the Prince George corridor, um, and, but what I have a problem with the exact language of the vibrancy plan is that when it was first presented, I think I was still serving on EDA, um, at that point, but the, the people who, the consultants who did this were truly from out of town, and they didn't realize that a lot of those parking lots are actually owned by the college and thus are state property and not private property that could be eminent domain, you know, this sort of stuff. And so a, a lot of this, their renderings were totally based on the, I thought, the idea that we would be able to acquire that property. And I'm like, um, are you aware? So I don't necessarily support their recommendations, and I find that picture there a little off versus the support of developing that corridor as a friendly pedestrian place, as, as a bounce place with all these other language stuff that, that they support.
I would think that would be something we could save for the whole section of that part of downtown. That we would support possibly the street designs and
Street design.
and, and, you know, sidewalks, lighting.
Right, I mean, I think it would be really nice if we had a very pedestrian-friendly downtown section that had similarly styled crosswalks and lighting and sidewalks and all that kind of stuff, so that people recognize that this was a place that you would extend the walking versus that you walk this block and the first block or so of Prince George has been redone, and then you see across the way, it's still the nineteen-sixties sidewalks. And so that area's ended, even though we're, we're trying to pull people through there.
I think I could write all of that into one whole section and not call that the triangle.
Yep, that'd be great.
City Square.
That's specific.
Any of that.
Yeah.
Just basically say that's something you. Any of that, just basically say that's something you, the commission supports in that downtown area.
Yeah, I think it's also, also worth um considering in this discussion, um the commemorative role that the Triangle plays and the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial, um uh which is, continues to be sort of forgotten. So this is an opportunity to, once again, call attention to that, uh which is also in this triangle. So activating that space has additional benefits, which include commemorative ones, uh bringing more people through there, uh can, can highlight can highlight that, in addition to bringing people, uh connecting the kind of commercial, those kind of commercial nodes that are at either end of Prince George Street. I think it's also a way of um maybe ensuring that that site doesn't get relocated, right? That the memorial wouldn't be proposed for relocation, uh because I think that would be regrettable.
Cock Hill, I think I heard pretty clearly the commission's recommendation on that, so I put that in red on the.
Would you just take that out completely?
Take it out.
Uh, yeah, I'm good, but I want to make sure that I heard you correctly in previous comments on that, so yes, I would take that.
Yeah.
Uh, the P six parking lot, I think, uh basically from the three to four-story structures with commercial on the first floor and residential above, that's one thing I think we need to discuss is height. Downtown, do we want four-story buildings in that block? I think three-story fits pretty well. We have quite a few three-story buildings downtown, really.
Thirty-five feet, right, for?
Right, currently, and I'll, I've got the zoning information shortly, I'll show you for everything downtown with a zoning map. Uh, but that's something to keep in the back of your mind when we get to the height.
And so, and the birdhouse is two full stories with a peaked roof, so that's like effectively like at a three-story.
It's one story.
It's a one-story with a peaked roof, oh.
It's big.
It must have very tall.
English basement.
Well, yeah.
Let me, I guess, the, the, the point, I guess, is that since I, I'm already saying the incorrect introduction there is that I would not be supportive of mixed-use buildings that towered over the birdhouse. I would think you would want, I, I would want them to be somewhat similar sized in height, so that there was a streetscape of, you know, that was.
They don't end up with sort of White House.
Paul Revere House is also a good example of that.
Right. Yeah, so maybe there's some additional language that could be put in here, um that talks about respecting the existing historic structure, uh actually structures.
Which I see is missing on this.
Right, well, I, I, yeah, I, I'm, I think we.
Talk about that.
Yeah, we need to talk about the, the stable you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, and but since, for, for me, since the stable is this dependency building, smaller than the original house, all that kind of stuff, the size of the mixed-use buildings, I think, need to be more constant with the birdhouse.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, it'd be nice to have some language in here that is sort of general, um but that speaks to this.
Yeah.
Generally, of course.
Of, of respecting the important historic um structure on the block.
Just, I mean, the last time we talked about that, the staple was sort of there, and they thought, they thought it could be like part of a, a community building for the people who live there, or something like that.
They talked about street types, and I think we don't have to, I think I got the gist of what we want to add for those. Streetscape improvements again, including planters and greenery and flowers and banners and streetlights and benches and signage, I think. Support that in the downtown area. Support the crosswalks, and we can look at design as to how you do that to differentiate different sections in the, in the downtown.
What were you gonna say about renaming Boundary?
I wasn't gonna say anything about renaming.
Can we take that out?
I think a lot of this is gonna come out based on the commission's.
We didn't mention Restaurant Row, we should go to.
Oh, yeah.
You want?
I would like to. I don't support that in the league.
Okay.
I think it's, uh, there are twenty restaurants within walking distance of Merchant Square.
We heard as much from, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, no, we've heard as much from residents in the broader area, mostly meaning the Peacock Hill residents, but they seemed also opposed to changes on that portion of Scotland Street, and I think it's worth respecting that.
The zoning allows a restaurant in those houses.
Really? Okay, yeah.
Currently. And I'll show you the zoning map shortly.
Yeah, I mean.
But I, I think there's a difference between.
Don't have to encourage, I think we could take this out, the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, one is, yeah. One's encouraging it, one's sort of signaling to Michelle and the economic development team, this is an opportunity set, that's a very different thing.
Right, exactly, yes.
It's not.
Right. That would be exciting in a bad way.
Think the commission supports street furniture and all those other things in there?
Well, and actually, you know what, let's just, I think, if we, uh, not to, not to completely dismiss the, the, the restaurants on Scotland Street, I think there are sections of Scotland Street where that might make sense, um so the south side of the block between oh my gosh, I'm gonna get the, the cross streets wrong, um the block where the hair salon is, right? Which already has some commercial, it's got an office building, there's an empty lot. I could readily see that becoming kind of knitted into the commercial core of town, rather than the residential. Uh, it's across the street from William and Mary offices and apartments. Uh, the, the end in front of Matthew Whaley, right, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I think if we, we all think of Scotland Street as that whole spine, but if we were to sort of parcel it out.
Right.
I think having an aspiration of converting that one block to more intensive commercial uses, um we've got great parking, right, the garage is right there, makes a lot of sense. So um if we're looking for ways, I'm looking for ways throughout this document to kind of recognize where some of these opportunities actually are, um not just reasonable, but I think appealing. Uh, I think if we can be a little bit careful on that one, uh I think there is at least one section of Scotland Street where
Right.
restaurant activity would.
Right, and as you can see on this map, that's the R S three yellow blob you see.
Yeah.
Uh, from Lafayette Street over to Scotland Street, and then the emit, the blue part of the block is the C W district. So the block between Henry Street and Boundary Street is zone L B one on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, of course, you've got the library, and then you've got the Blatton Building. And those areas, and then you got residential again, where of course we wouldn't allow restaurants and those types of things. And I think, I'll go over that a little bit when I go through these sections, because there's other things it recommends in the downtown too, as far as changing zoning classifications, and we need to talk about it, but. So the vibrancy plan, of course, recommended Peacock Hill, which I think uh we would say no. The Blatton Building property from L B one to B one in the rear part of the church lots and William and Mary properties on Prince George Street. What I wanted to let you look at first, because if you don't look at the zoning ordinance, you don't know what's allowed in all those districts, so I figured I'd give you a slide on that. In the L B one, it's basically permitted uses are single-family duplexes, multifamily, townhomes, and then those commercial-type uses and buildings under ten thousand square feet are allowed by right. So in those areas, those houses in that block between, between Henry Street and uh North Boundary Street, you could have bake shops and banks and convenience service establishments, like the beauty parlor and the hair shop and those types of things. You could have uh offices, restaurants, and retail. So the zoning ordinance currently allows those uses in that area I showed you on the map. It allows in buildings exceeding ten thousand square feet, which means someone is taking a bunch of buildings down and putting another building up, you would need a special use permit for those types of uses. So there's sort of a.
Because the intensity that, that would be had.
Right, there's an intensity then that you're building on the block that the zoning ordinance currently uh gives more scrutiny to, so it allows planning commission and city councils to look at those as a use permit, because then you could look at traffic flows and those kinds of things that, that a big building like that typically is, and we don't typically have large buildings like that downtown. So in the B one district, of course, we still allow the single-family duplexes, multifamily churches, hotels, which is interesting, hotels and motels with ten or less bedrooms are allowed by right. Office buildings not exceeding fifty thousand square feet. And then we got retail, and, and one thing I highlighted was the storage of materials and supplies, because I think we'll see that shortly in the vibrancy study, they recommend taking that out. If a use permit is the hotels and motels with more than ten bedrooms, convenience stores with gasoline sales. I think it's safe for us to say we could take gasoline sales out of B one in the downtown. I don't think we see we're gonna allow that in the downtown area. Uh, office buildings exceeding fifty thousand square feet, retail sales in buildings with fifty thousand square feet, these all require use permits. Service stations, that was one I highlighted, because I think we could possibly take service stations out of B one downtown. I don't see someone buying property in the B one district, and you'll see it in a minute on the map again, because we'll go back to that, that would buy a piece of property downtown and put in a service station, because they are just not, you don't see people doing that anymore. Permitted uses in the downtown residential district are single-family duplexes, no commercial uses, you'll see in basically there, except for B and Bs and. For multifamily is a special use permit, townhouses are special use permits, and churches, churches are special use permits along with the public buildings and schools. So there are no commercial uses per se in the R D T district, so keep that in mind. The height allowed is basically the same in all three M, thirty-five feet. Measure height from grade to the midpoint of a gable roof, give the parapet, other types of roofs. The density, so I wanted to let you know what the density is. The density in L B one is fourteen per acre, you can go higher with a special use permit approved by city council, and that's based on, and it's all three areas that that's allowed in. It's based on the, the quality of the building and the site design of the development, and how the scale and character of the development relates to its immediate surroundings and to the downtown area as a whole. So keep that in mind, because that's, all of those districts have the same thing. B one has fourteen dwelling units, R D T is eight dwelling units allowed by right. So you would got fourteen, fourteen, and eight allowed by right. All of them allow you to go above that, based on the, the building design and site and the relationship to the downtown.
And questions of design and scale and character are reviewed by uh A R B and then recommended to council or reviewed by this body and recommended to council, given that it's a.
I think A R B can look at that, but I think Planning Commission can also comment on that, and I think city council ultimately.
It's ultimately city councils, but, yeah.
But A R B has to approve the design of any buildings in the, in the downtown area. So that's one thing that A R B needs to keep in mind when they review those uh plans that come in. They need to also think about the quality of the building, the site design, and those other things that sometimes you don't think about in an A R B when something's out on Richmond Road or some other areas, but in the downtown district. The ordinance specifically outlines this in those sections, as, that's what we should look at when we have a new that wants to increase the density from fourteen or eight, shown in those districts. So there's that map, and as you can see, the B one district is, of course, is the area where the municipal building is and the train station, that area. The L B one you see on the map is the block between Lafayette Street and Scotland Street and both sides of Scotland Street in that block between Henry and Boundary, and also the Blatton Building. And then you've got L B one at the other end of South Henry Street, which fronts on Henry Street, basically from Ireland Street to Boundary, that pink you see on that part of the map. Uh, the B one, of course, you see is the delis up on Richmond Road and Scotland Street. Delis on Scotland Street, you've got the P D C, which is Tribe Square. The R D T is that block between Richmond Road and Prince George Street that houses the churches and the William and Mary parking lot, and then William and Mary has a building also on the corner. You've got, uh, B one, of course, is the Triangle Building, and the lots that front on Prince George Street are B one. On both sides of Prince George Street, all the way over to Ireland Street, bas- basically is B one in that middle section.
C Z nineteen.
That C Z is a conditional zoning, so it has, it basically restrictions on the use, usually in intensity. So that's the difference. Whenever you see a C Z on the zoning map, it usually means there's some, some type of proper. And M S is, of course, the Governor's Square Lot. And we'll get to that, but in this first slide, the, the vibrancy plan recommended changing L B one to B one, the, the Blatton Building part of that property, and I sort of outlined it in this slide. So I wanted to get the commission's feeling on that, based on my overview of the L B one and B one that I just mentioned, the different types of uses.
Well, L B one, you can still have light commercial downtown.
Yes, remember, I think the L B one was ten thousand or less was by right, more was a use permit for retail and restaurants and those types of uses in one building. Both of them allows the multifamily. One, if I remember, I think it's, B one allows it with a use permit, L B one allows it by right.
B one allows, sorry, multifamily with a special use permit?
Yep. See, B one, multifamily by right. L B one, I think it was, by right.
So in terms of housing, the, the, in terms of housing, there's no, there's no difference between L B one and B one, is that correct?
Right.
So the difference is scale essentially of permitted commercial uses between L B one and B one?
Also, it recommends the rear of the churches going from R D T to downtown commercial or B one. Staff has a concern with that. Staff would recommend if you don't want the R D T district in for that block, to change it all to B, B one for the block. I think it's very hard for property owners and staff to be able to explain to a owner two hundred feet of your lot is business district. Another hundred feet of your lot is a different zoning classification, because it, I think it really makes it confusing to not only the owner or designer or builder on what goes where, because the uses are different from one classification to another, and if you have the main use up in the B one, can you allow an accessory use in the different zoning clas- classification for the front use? So it gets, I think it just makes it too daggone confusing, and if we want to change to allow those uses that were mentioned in the vibrancy plan of the pop-up retail vendors or stores on that side, I think we're better off just changing the churches to, to all those properties to B one, is recommend that change, rather than.
Half of the blocks. Half of the blocks. So are churches, churches are presumably permitted uses in B one?
Yeah, churches, I looked at it earlier, but now going back to make sure churches are allowed.
Churches and other permanent buildings.
I think in RDT it was with a use permit, but let me look.
And I think what the, what the consultant is, is trying to get at is just activating the south side of, what is that, Prince George or Scotland at that point?
Prince George.
Prince George, just activating the south side of Prince George, which is a little dismal right now, if you walk along there, it's a bunch of parking lots, unless it's Sunday, I suppose, and then it's lively, but, so that there is, I think, good reason to support.
It is, it's very busy on Sundays, yes, but also it's, but, but the sidewalks are horrible throughout that, that section, I mean, that whole streetscape needs to be redone.
Yeah, if you're a pedestrian, you feel like you don't belong.
Oh, yeah.
On either side of that street.
Parking lot and parking lots in B one are allowed in principal use, apparently.
I'll, I think I'll get to that in a minute.
But I, you know, another piece of this is, to what degree is this sort of aspirational zoning? I mean, if they're churches, the church isn't going to put up a, a sandwich shop, right, in the back of their parking lot and lose some of their Sunday space, so what are the, what are the circumstances in which we can anticipate that south side of the street being animated with commercial activity, as long as it's, as long as it's part, and I don't anticipate this changing, as long as it's part of the, the church's property?
The church would have to be sold probably in the use.
Yeah.
On the lot.
Yeah.
They are not going to give away their parking.
That's why I say, I see this as sort of, this is sort of aspirational zoning. On the other hand, I mean, maybe that's the, the advantage of the pop-ups, is you could imagine six day a week uses that are different from Sunday uses, where the parking is not really being used, and it's just sort of empty, temporary things going in there, I, I don't know, I can't.
I, I could envision food trucks being there several days a week, and/or even a little daily grind coffee shop that's in a small cubicle. I remember there was a, a Moose Mud Shop or something that, like, took up one parking space over near where the Ace is now, and so a little daily grind coffee shop or something that can become a ministry of a church could happen, and some sandwich shops, and so, it can make a few extra bucks, and, and they could engage some people in the, in the community who wouldn't otherwise be able to find traditional employment, because I assume churches are going to be more forgiving and flexible than your standard business as far as some things when it comes to sandwich shops and coffee and such.
The reason I pointed out is if you notice, the RDT does not allow any retail.
Yeah.
That's, so that's why I bring that whole section up, that if you really want to allow those types of uses, I think the zoning does need to change, and keep in mind the food trucks, mobile food units have to be a certain distance from any other restaurant-type use in the downtown district, so that really limits where they can go.
I thought we, I thought we changed that, I thought we got rid of that recommendation, we kept that in.
Not in the downtown.
I see.
Others, but the main reason I brought this up is that recommendation was in there, and if we really want to allow retail, restaurant, other kind of uses in that area, the RDT won't allow it.
Yeah, well, and even on the map, your colors make it so clear that that's just this funny little island, that's a relic of nineteen thirties Richmond Road when it was residential, and, and some of it still is residential, but the, the, the problem that's trying to be solved here is finding a way to connect the delis to Merchant Square, essentially, and make it feel like people should be going between the two, which I think is something that we all support, so as long as there's no, as long as there's no detriment to the churches in rezoning those parcels from RDT to B one, I, I, you know, we can leave it to others to solve the essential problem, which is how to actually make this happen, make it lively, but we enable that by just, by changing it to B one, right? Okay.
And if they don't like it, I'm sure they will.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think changing the Blatton Building lot to B one is necessary.
Is that how the commission, the rest of the commission feels?
So from LB one to B one?
Right.
LB one has lots of options on what you can do.
It does.
I mean, and lots of options that, to me, like, the ten thousand square foot limit is not really restrictive.
Right. The biggest restriction is if it's under ten thousand square feet, it's by right, if it's over ten thousand square feet, you need a use permit.
Well, and it's not, and it's not the individual establishment that's ten thousand square feet, it's the building itself, so if you wanted to build a large-scale, if you wanted to build something like what we have in Merchant Square, and then divide it up into individual units, you'd need a special use permit, right?
Or if you wanted to do first floor commercial and two floors of multifamily.
Yeah.
That's a larger building, the building square feet is over ten thousand, it would kick in the SUP requirement. But there's, but there's still a way to move it forward, yes.
Yeah, just requires a.
Just allows a little more scrutiny, I guess.
I think scrutiny, anything that happens in that block, I think scrutiny is welcome.
Necessary.
Yeah, yep.
That's why I copied all these sections, because I know it's very confusing as to what's allowed and not allowed.
Yeah.
This piece of property is on the market and for sale, which is currently zone museum support, so we need to look at this piece of property, which is the Governor's Inn, and have a discussion on what we want to, the zoning classification and the comp plan designation, because the zoning classification is museum support, the comp plan is also museum support, and if the property sells, we need to change that. So what do we want to go there? I've had phone calls on this property on for apartments, apartments only, three to four stories in height. I've had phone calls on apartments with less height, potentially leaving the existing buildings and putting apartments in the existing buildings. So this is an important discussion, I think, for us as to what we want to see here, and what zoning classification we want that property to go to, because we're going to see this soon, and in order for anybody to do anything other than basically what's there, is they're going to have to rezone it and change the comp plan possibly. And the density has also been a concern, the density ranges from, I want to say twenty-five to forty units an acre.
In terms of the proposals that you're hearing.
Yes.
So I'll jump in and tell you what I'd love to see there. I'd love to see some housing that is affordable for our workforce, and, you know, it seems to me that it, people can walk most places from there, it's close to the essential services, the bus stop, the police, the post office, and so much of the area. I go back to when, my recollection of when Highland Park was developed, that was developed so that people could have a home in Williamsburg and work in Columbia, Williamsburg, and it was close, and we're still battling that same problem now. So some housing that people can afford to live in is really important to this community, it's just, it's vital, I think. The terrain of that land in that picture doesn't really show that, I think that land is much higher than so much of Highland Park, and there's, there's a nice roll there to that hill, so even if you had a taller building there, it's not going to be, I, I don't think it's going to feel like it's towering over the homes that are nearby, because the, the roll of the land, you've got train tracks on one side of it, and it's much deeper than I realized it was from that picture, so I think it's ideal for what I would consider workforce housing, entry-level housing, apartments, that sort of thing. Much better than converting another hotel, perhaps, but.
Yeah, I, I guess I agree with a lot of what you just said, I think that, for me, in looking at that picture that you had previously, the, the aerial picture, what stands out for me is that there's a neighborhood, a well-established neighborhood right there, you know, and that we do need to be mindful of that, and that, the, I, I, I guess I thought you were going to say some, since we were living in the land of B one, I'm like, no, B one there, but I, this is a big, this is a big issue, I mean, and I certainly don't want to have us in a matter of a conversation of five minutes decide.
Right.
What exact residential category it should be, but I do think it, that is probably the right move.
From a staff standpoint, I look at it as when you're coming into town on Henry Street, this is one of the first commercial properties you see currently.
Currently.
Even if it's residential, it's going to set the tone for downtown, so do you want taller buildings here, do you want buildings in character with what downtown is, and it's important on the density. What, how many units? As I mentioned, I gave you the, that's why I went back to the other map, is basically our downtown is LB one, B one, or RDT, you can see it just about.
And it's all thirty-five?
All thirty-five in heights currently, and the densities were fourteen, fourteen, and eight, eight in RDT.
And, and the Governor's Inn is, is in that thirty-five height range as well?
Governor's Inn currently is two stories, I believe, in the front, and three stories in the buildings in the back, because it's.
Where it falls off.
It falls off. So that's, that's.
Well, should we talk about what's easy?
Yeah.
What's easy is taking it out of MS, right?
Right.
It will not be museum support.
Right.
So what is the, what is the, the right thing for it to be? The only two suggestions, and I, I think I agree with them, is that it, that it be residential, some form of residential, whether that means LB one or RDT, or conceivably something else. Is Highland Park RDT, or is that?
Highland Park is residential.
RS two?
RS two.
So that's an option, too, the adjoining parcel. It backs up to a residential district, as, as Greg points out, we have a, an acute need for affordable housing in town, that, well, that's another factor, it is, it is along, it's literally on the railroad tracks, so it is a little hard to imagine it being appealing for a sort of high-end residential, but I, maybe I, you know, don't have a clear enough sense of what the market is, is willing to, you know.
Folks I've talking, talking to are looking for high, high-end apartments.
Growing up on Harrison, I heard the trains consistently, more in the fall and winter.
It's nice when they're in the distance.
They weren't that far away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Lafayette Street going out, all those people have the train.
Yeah, yeah, and, and yeah, I mean, this, the, the train comes through downtown Williamsburg, that's part of life, I mean, I think that this should move to residential and maybe give us some options of what RS two would look like, or what RM two, or, you know, what's, whatever the couple of options are as we see the second draft or something, I, I have a feeling we could all go on this one point for the next hour without having some more thought, thought, you know, time to think about it, I mean, I think that it is important as you drive up that, up the road, you know, past the turnoff to the visitor's center, and it's a very beautiful entry road, I wouldn't want to see, like, four-story cookie cutter apartments, like, right there, you know, that just does not appeal. But obviously, the, the inn that's been there for decades, someone could have the right to just operate that building, it isn't that, you know, there is no guarantee that the building will be going down in a beautiful moving.
RM one allows eight units a net acre, RM two allows fourteen per net acre.
And that's the same with RDT, right? And our, our townhouses permitted by right in RM two, or only RDT?
No, townhouses are.
Only RDT.
In RM two and RM one.
Oh, okay.
Not in RS two, which is Highland Park, Highland Park is residential, single-family residential.
Right.
RS two is single-family residential.
Okay.
And I can get you the density.
RS two, on the one hand, is a reasonable choice, because the adjoining parcel is RS two, doesn't, feels like it would be hard.
I don't see single-family lots being created on this.
Yeah, it seems like it would be very hard to get single-family in there, and any kind of numbers that would be appealing.
And RS two basically only allows single-family.
Yeah.
LB one allows townhouses.
Yes.
Well.
Yeah. I, I don't see this as commercial, commercially appealing, but I, I, I mean, I could be wrong about that, but.
Now, the toy store closed.
What's that?
There used to be a toy store there.
Really?
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
Before the Governor's Inn, there was a toy store out there?
It was there in that little green spot in the corner.
And that little building, they tore the building down in the green spot on the corner, right?
Wow, oh, man, that's amazing. So you go across the tracks to get your, whatever, your wooden soldiers, huh?
Well, they had, so it, it was almost a, an accessory to the hotel, because you had so many.
It was contemporary with the hotel, I see they were at the same time.
Yeah, that was a Sheridan at one time.
Wow.
And so many guests staying there, it was like a gift shop to the hotel.
I see.
And it was a toy maker, it was the same as the one downtown, it was the same ownership.
Really? Oh, wow, wow.
Well, LB one.
So the issue on height, I think, does the commission feel that three stories is the max, or four is okay?
Thirty-five feet, especially since it's on a hill.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I think we've been judicious about where we permit increased heights, and, and, you know, Midtown Row, and Quarter Path, yeah, with Midtown Row and Quarter Path, and also.
High Street.
High Street are all.
That's inside High Street, not at the perimeter.
Right.
Yeah, we're all out, sort of.
Residential in High Street.
They're at the edges of town, and I think it was very sensible to, to permit those out of the edges of town. I think right in town, on an important entry corridor, I mean, if you come in, depending upon what exit you take from sixty-four, you come right past here every time.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's harder to support choosing to increase the height limit on this parcel, in much the same way as we discussed on P three, right? I think, I think this is a similar, you don't have the problem of the birdhouse, but this is a gateway to the city, so I think we ought to be pretty circumspect about going above thirty-five feet here.
I don't disagree, and, and at the same time, if there was the ability to limit to three stories within X distance of the road, and then you had a four-story further back, again, based on terrain, and the, the way the first story, the, the front building might block it, similar to how it's set up now, I, I think that may be a factor in there.
I tell you another concern in staff, is the ability to see any taller structures to the historic area. From this site.
Yeah, so there's the concern from road, historic area, and then neighborhood, I mean, there are tall pines, I can, I can speak to it, because I literally walked past all this on the way here, but there are tall pines, it is pretty, sort of blocked off from view currently, but that's at its current elevation, so I don't, you know, I do worry what, what does four stories look like from the neighborhood side, and I will say, in getting to know many of the other residents of Highland Park now, they like that it's quiet, tucked away, green, all the things that a four-story building isn't, and they're actually, again, not that we have any control over it, but the folks at the end of the road are bothered. but the folks at the end of the road are bothered by the fact that especially in the winter, they can actually see the relatively taller apartment buildings down at that end um of the street there, so over in, I guess that's York, yeah, the York side of things, so. Anyways, if that gives you some insight into the the broad, I don't want to speak for everyone in the neighborhood, but certainly the neighbors I've met, that's the the consensus is.
I'm sorry, is is three um by right and four with special use that?
Caps it.
Okay.
It caps it at thirty-five.
Yeah.
But someone could always.
Ask for a text change.
For a text change, I mean, if there was something and then that would allow a certain amount of review and actually proffers and, you know, those things that could come through through the negotiation process, I mean, I I feel really comfortable with keeping it at the thirty-five and all that and that that gives people a a lo- a wide range to think of projects.
Yeah.
And if a really fabulous project came that they wanted to have taller stuff a hundred feet, you know, off the road, let us see the um the layout and all that, I mean, to me, I think that that's where you'd want to actually probably have like those blooms and, you know, where you could actually go around and say, can, are we gonna be able to see this from the historic area, are we gonna be able to see this, you know, that kind of stuff.
Could you remind us how the thirty-five is measured, is that average from grade, you know, around the perimeter?
Top of the building for a flat roof.
Yeah.
Or a parapet. And to the midpoint of a gable.
Uh-huh, but in terms of, is that from the front door, from each corner, from the average of the corners?
I got my organs with me.
Yeah.
I said you want a crooked building with the average of the corner.
Well, no, so if the so if the falls off, you know, by ten feet.
Grade means a reference plane representing the average of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the exterior of the front building wall or on a corner lot, the average of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the exterior of the building walls along the front and side streets.
So it's the front, whatever the front is, so if the grade falls off ten feet from front to back, you have.
A walkout basement option on that side.
Okay.
The individuals who've been looking at this property are looking at multiple buildings, keep that in mind. So if what I'm hearing is basically you're comfortable with thirty-five feet.
Yes.
Well, that's consistent with what we have throughout, right, this district.
You're comfortable with me looking at the zoning ordinance and thinking of the uses and the different classifications that allow multifamily, I guess, and townhouses, is what I heard?
I think that's right, yeah.
So then I can come back within the next draft with maybe a staff recommendation on what the zoning are to be. And then based on that, we can back in the comp plan once we decide what the.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I think we ought to keep in mind Greg's point that there's a real need for affordable housing in town. I think that just needs to be continued to be part of the discussion as we figure this out.
For for it to work for affordable housing, then I think the density is gonna have to be at a fairly sizable number.
And but how the rules work currently, the fourteen is by right, but you just can propose a higher one with your plan as it goes through ARB and site plans and all that, and then it can be evaluated at that point, right? So it doesn't require someone to have a zoning change or anything like that.
For the density and the LB one, the B one, and the RDT, you can go above what's allowed in that by right if you meet the other criteria, the quality of the building and site design, the scale and character of the development related to the immediate surroundings and to the downtown area as a whole, so you gotta keep that in mind to the immediate surroundings.
The immediate surroundings is the post office, the back end of the post office?
I'm thinking of heights too, I think we sort of. We keep that in mind.
Do we have any creativity or flexibility in sort of requiring that it be affordable housing? Like, I'm I'm very open into talking about increased density if we know it's actually gonna be affordable, but if it's just gonna be twenty extra eighteen-hundred-dollar-a-month apartments, I don't know that that's what we want to see, I I'm saying it seems like we have a strong consensus about the importance of affordable housing and I I very strongly agree with that and I'm just wondering what what options we have when it comes to zoning to even.
I guess you can look at that as part of the application, if I wanna go above fourteen, I'm gonna give you this percentage of affordable housing.
Sure.
For this increase in density and you can weigh that as part of the this special use permit package.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable handling that as part of the special use permitting process.
Yeah.
Especially given that this is on the market right now, I I think I think that would affect um the market for this parcel in a way that I don't think is necessary, but I I think dealing with it, it's special use permitting process makes all the sense in the world.
But I think that gets to the point a little bit of being careful with which kind of zoning we choose, where it gives us some control through special use that way and maybe outright limits density just so that we do have that privilege of reviewing it very intensely.
A little hair on the back of my neck that's saying we need to make sure we run that by the city attorney.
It's already written on in my notepad.
I went to an all-day seminar last year on exactly that, so. Careful with that.
I think. Way that other jurisdictions do that is inclusionary zoning.
Did you refresh our memory about how that works?
Inclusionary zoning is you can sort of allow a range of uses as long as the building meets the scale and design that you include in the inclusionary zoning and inclusionary zoning dictates that you have to have a certain amount of affordability with certain uses, like multifamily uses and those kinds of things, so. But I, yeah, I wrote on my pad to ask Chris about.
Okay.
I'll do that and.
We we have to be so careful about impairing the property, the current property owners.
Right.
Rights here because that, you know, any anything we do or signal is gonna, as as Jeff says, gonna can can tank a deal pretty fast if we're not careful.
And and hopefully, they they understand in the long run that they can't have people who live in this area, they won't have people who can work in this area. That that should be a big part of their their decision in uh selling, I would think.
So I think what I heard is for staff to look at maybe allowing the most flexibility on the lot by picking one of those zoning classifications that allows some retail, some multifamily, townhouses. Keep keep the density to whatever one we recommend that's in the ordinance and of course, it allows you to go above that if you have that criteria that I mentioned previously and recommend keeping the height at thirty-five feet. So did I cover everything, height, density, uses? Because if suppose someone looks at it and wants to put another hotel there, do we wanna say no to a hotel there?
I'd be much less enthusiastic about a hotel, I'm very enthusiastic about reducing the supply of hotel rooms um and and to.
How about some type of office or retail? I'm just trying to flush aid.
Yeah, 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 no, no, but in what you were just articulating, you you included retail and while we made a storyline going about the old toy shop, gift store for the, that was the only retail that I heard, I mean, if I say for the past fifteen minutes, it was all different kinds of housing.
Yeah, I think residential.
So I.
Keen in on housing then, you think.
Yeah, yeah.
And especially housing with affordable housing.
It's so disconnected, it's so disconnected from the main commercial district, um it just, I'd I'd much rather see somebody who wanted to invest in retail doing that in the center of town, doing that in the heart of town, rather than out there, rather than drawing people away. It just doesn't seem like the the right use for that parcel.
Yeah, I mean, you're two blocks from tons of retail, is what I guess the point is, you know?
I don't think we have a shortage of retail or office in in our community right now.
Yeah.
We have a shortage of places for the everyday Joes to live. And that should very candidly become an extension of Highland Park, um where it's it's affordable housing for people to live in our community and work in our community and and be pedestrians and cyclists and get to where they need to on a daily basis. That's without question what I would love to see there.
Well, plus at this location, it's very close to transit.
Yep.
Trains, buses.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I think.
Uses downtown, you know, it's.
It's abundantly clear we need more affordable housing in town and and I I just, given that there's a parcel on the market right now, I wanna be a little bit careful about how we. I wanna make sure that the seller.
I'll talk to the seller too.
Okay. Okay.
I was I was surprised he's not.
So one of the recommendations was to remove the storage of materials and supplies out of the zoning text and also off-street parking. I had a concern with off-street parking because there are off-street parking lots downtown that count towards our downtown parking count, even though they might be private parking lots. And one of the nice things about our downtown is with the downtown parking district, you can change uses and not have to add additional parking.
Right.
You gotta keep the parking you have, but you don't have to add additional parking. And I would don't think we want to make those off-street parking lots non-conforming by taking it out of the district, so. That's staff's, the materials and supplies, I can't, it was in one of the, I highlighted it. I don't have much of a concern with taking that out because I don't think we have that downtown in the B one district that's in the B one section there, storage of materials and supplies, incidental to the use of a permitted use. I can't think of anything downtown that has storage. What I think of storage of materials and supplies, I think of a nursery or a landscaper, a building contractor, you know, large quantities of stuff when I think of storage of buildings, materials and supplies. It doesn't bother me if the commission wants to take that out of the the B one district as recommended. I have a concern with the uh removing the parking lots. And service stations, I think we already agreed with that, I think we talked about the heights. I guess the commission still is recommending for all of downtown, keeping the height requirements to thirty-five feet. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
Yeah, I think that's right, um I I I think we've been intelligent about permitting very carefully greater heights at the edges of town, but but right here. I I I think I think we need to keep it at thirty-five.
And the only thing I could think about why the number forty-two is there is that if you have mixed use, the first floor is usually taller. Than a normal residential height, you usually get, ten feet will get you. Hey, in residential, but in commercial, the first floor is typically fifteen, I think. So that might be the reason they mentioned that forty-two there. Some flexibility in the first floor and two floors of residential. I think will get you above thirty-five.
Still give you nine and nine if you had fifteen on the first floor, which is thirty-five.
And then if you do a pitch roof.
Although what's you how you, I don't have to ask you, you gave it to us, what's the Secalice Building?
Secalice Building might not be in there, I could probably find it. I've got the.
I mean, I guess another way to think about this is, you know, our town is set up with narrow streets where a a certain building frontage feels natural.
Well, Griffin Arms is thirty-two and point six.
Say that again.
Thirty-two and six for Griffin Arms.
That's thirty-two foot six?
Commercial in two floors, right?
Yeah.
They did, they they wanted more space on the first floor, uh but we were pretty tight on that and we can make it work and. I mean, next door, um I didn't just look, but uh next door where they've got the Amber Ox and such, it seems to work in thirty-five, I I think it's is reasonable and people figured it out in the past and.
Well, as as I was starting to say, it's partly a function of just the infrastructure that we've got, we have a certain width of streets.
Yeah.
As as that height grows above thirty-five, then the shadows get longer for more of the day, um you start to feel like you're in this sort of valley. So I think I think thirty-five.
Good human scale for these streets.
Is about right for us, um I think if we had, you know, much, much wider streets and broader sidewalks and just a different kind of civic infrastructure, I think we could entertain maybe something a little bit different, but but for what we've got, I think this is pretty reasonable.
And I think the density we discussed, basically keep the densities as they were and the applicant has the option to increase density based on the building design and scale and all those other things that I mentioned previously.
So before we leave um these these recommendations that we're kind of questioning, was there a motivation behind? I am not, you know, I'm not the a great advocate of parking, uh parking lots, rather, I should say, as a kind of part of the part of the downtown of anything, but I mean, you gotta have some of it, um but was there a motivation behind removing parking lots? Did they, did they express any, I just can't remember.
I think, I mean, for me, one of the issues that is with the parking lots is the idea that if you were to renovate some of these lots that have building on it with four or five parking spaces, that if you required that the renovation maintained those parking spaces versus sort of like being able to buy um buy carbon emissions, but you know, buy buy parking spots in these parking lots that we already have, it would actually free a developer up to be able to say, here is my now green space that I have and what could I do with it, not the idea that I have this parcel and I have to save six parking spots, even though this parking spot's all up and down the streets and there's two parking garages down the street.
So does that, does that, I'm not totally, I'm not yet with you, does that recommend removing parking lots as a permitted use or retaining parking lots as a permitted use?
Removing them as, the idea is to remove the requirement that you maintain these small small parking lots of on private properties.
See, then that starts to downtown parking district.
Parking, right.
If everyone went and got rid of all the parking spaces, then we would need to build more parking garages.
Yeah, yeah.
But but that's their logic, I mean, you asked what their the the logic behind privacy plan.
Oh, I see.
That's that was the logic, that there's probably enough parking in the public lots so that if individual landholders wanted to redo a parcel and not have the three or four car spots anymore, that that was the logic behind that.
Well, that's the logic behind the downtown parking regulations, the the, but I I guess I was just asking about why remove that as a permitted, oh, permitted principal use. Oh, my gosh.
So.
I see.
When you say principal use, you take the college lot, you take the the parking garages.
They'd all be non-conforming.
You take the CW parking lots downtown.
P six, yeah, yeah.
P six, you take the parking lot across the street that's a principal.
Yeah. It'd suddenly be non-conforming.
Right.
And if someone wanted to come along and build a new parking deck somewhere, it wouldn't be allowed as a principal use?
Currently, right now, say, we take P six for an example, if someone wanted to come in and develop P six today, that's allowed with the mixed use currently. We would look at the density and all other things, but that person has to provide the number of parking spaces that are in P six plus you somewhere or you can't do it. You can't take away three hundred parking spaces down. You can't take away three hundred parking spaces downtown and put a building up and not replace three hundred parking spaces if that's how many, I'm just guessing how many spaces are in there. You've got to accommodate in your development the ground level parking there.
But what if somebody wanted to...
And then you need one unit for each apartment or residential unit you put on there. So you don't need to have any additional spaces for the commercial, but you do need one space for every residential unit. So you've got to replace parking that's there somewhere in the development. You can do a parking garage or underground or something like that, and you need to take into account the number of residential uses, units you put on there and put extra units in the account for those residential uses. So that's what the current ordinance says. And any removal of parking downtown anymore requires a special use permit.
But what if they didn't want to replace a structure? They just wanted to make it a parking lot? And that...
Currently, it's a permitted use.
The vibrancy plan is recommending that it, taking it out from a permitted use. And that if you wanted to come back and build a parking lot at some later date, you would have to do it through a variance process.
Variance, if it's not allowed, it's not allowed. You'd have to amend the ordinance to put it back in again. It's just the parking lot, not the parking garages. There, it's okay with the parking garage. So I think the intent is to get rid of the ground level and create more garages, and therefore, you allow yourself to create more mixed-use, commercial-type establishments in the area. But as I said, that's, you can do that. You could take P6 today, as long as you take into account of the development, you've got to put back the parking spaces that are already there, or you have to go through a use permit. Then you've got to look at your downtown parking study, which basically said, we have enough parking spaces, including all these spaces, including all these parking lots, but if you take away two or three hundred spaces here and two or three hundred spaces there, you're going to leave yourself with a big, huge problem downtown of no parking.
Right, yeah, I think there's a few items in here where it seems like it's reducing flexibility on the part of property owners in ways that don't provide any clear benefit. And I just don't, I don't see that there's a clear benefit to reducing this flexibility for parking. Again, the last thing I want on my gravestone is I was the great advocate of parking in downtown Williamsburg, but I just, it seems, I don't see a payoff here. And I do see a potential, I do see a potential problem for a property owner, right? So I, this doesn't seem like something that I, I can, I can't find a way to support this. I can't find a way to rationalize this, while I understand the kind of thinking behind it. This doesn't seem like the right solution. So that was one.
And materials and supply?
Materials and supplies, I guess they're trying to prevent people from putting storage facilities in B1. Again, it doesn't strike me as a huge potential problem, but on the other hand, well, I don't know.
And go the way of gas stations.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Talked about that.
And I mean, it does say that it would still be an accessory use, right? Which, that makes, I mean, I don't know what it would, you would know better than I do, but the only thing I can even think of is like the little shed refrigerator thing behind Aroma's.
Right.
But that's accessory to it, I assume, so, yeah, I don't see any problem with.
And then this business about restrict parking to rear yards, no parking in front yards. I didn't remember that in the, in the report either. Oh, what's, what's going on here? I don't understand that.
I think it was basically saying, don't encourage parking in the front yard, so probably got to look at the...
I think the intention there is to bring the uses to the street front so that there's a pedestrian...
Oh, I see.
...tie, and that if you're using a vehicle, that the vehicle's parked around the back of the building?
Sure.
So that you don't have to walk through a parking lot to get to the business.
If this were Richmond Road, I think, you know, maybe we, maybe we think about that, but this is just not a situation that we've got a problem with in town, where people are putting their commercial buildings at the back of the lot and a big parking lot in front.
Staff encourages parking in the back, buildings up front, especially downtown.
Yeah.
And I think that's what everybody wants, to build in up front.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep in mind, you don't have to put any additional parking.
In, in B1.
You only have to keep the number of spaces that you currently have on the lot.
Yeah.
Unless you're doing residential, and then residential is one more space.
Yeah, okay.
So if you have five spaces currently, you need to, if you redevelop the lot, you need to keep five spaces. And if you had ten units, you would have to find a total of fifteen spaces. I think if we, if we had more parking structures downtown, then I think we could look at that flexibility of removing parking from the lots. But I think currently with the way downtown is, and we have two structures and where they're located and where the uses are, it's a little premature to say, take away, you don't have to have any parking if you redevelop a lot right now. If we had four parking garages downtown, I think then you have a different way of looking at that and saying, yes, you ought to be able to redevelop now. We have an adequate parking and structures and so forth, that you don't need those extra five spaces and behind the building for your, for your uses. And in most instances, a lot of the folks want a few spaces so they have spaces for their employees to park, staff to park, so... So did we?
I hope so.
Rather than go to midtown, could I recommend we look at the letter?
Yeah, I was going to say, we're only on page nineteen of thirty-four, so maybe we should just break on that.
Yeah. I have one other thing I would like to bring to your attention. We have, put it at the end of the, because I forget, we would, Wada site. Clonia Williamsburg is selling this piece of property. They're under contract where the busts, Clonia Williamsburg buses are on Pocahontas Trail.
Yep.
So I saw that Wada's looking at purchasing this portion of that property for Wada to own the facility, and they currently are there, but Wada is buying the property from Clonia Williamsburg Foundation. So Wada will be the owner and the principal use on the site. So they are coming in to, currently, to add text so that we can get Wada as the principal use on the site, a public bus facility, blah, 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 in the MS. One thing we need to look at in the comp plan is looking at possibly changing the zoning classification in this because this, too, is also MS district.
Oh, right. Yeah.
So I was thinking, I showed you the industrial, and that's the only industrial piece we have in the city above, which is off Fifth Avenue, that's Clonia Williamsburg currently. I was looking at the type of use, and it makes more sense to me for it to go to industrial use. I don't think I want to add bus stations in the B1 district or the B2 district or the B3 district. What do you think of that going to an industrial use? Because I think that really is what it is.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
What are permitted uses in industrial in...
Would add that text to the industrial district. That's why I'm asking, because if they're looking to come to the commission probably in March for a text change, I was thinking possibly, do we want to just go ahead and change the comp plan, the zoning, and the text change all in one packet and get that one done and behind Wada so they don't have to come, go back through that later on?
I agree that rezoning is a better solution than changing what's permitted in museum support.
Okay, great. So we have a, oh, that was, back to our, my agenda here. So I guess we're going to stop the review of chapter eight with regard to our ongoing discussion, but there is an opportunity for an open forum at this time, and we'd like to come forward and speak to the commission on our work so far. Not seeing anyone, done my due diligence, so we will. Before we adjourn, though, Carolyn has given us a draft of the CIP letter from our meeting last week with Andrew, and I read through it and it seemed to be where it was. I mean, for me, I thought it was good.
So I just, since I missed last week's meeting and I'm looking at this for the first time, I agree a hundred percent with the content. When I read this, about the library as needed, I thought, well, don't we have one? So I, I'm just, just a word choice thing, you know, vital or something, you know, something that just struck me. Just that word just made me...
I would just get rid of needed and, have it be downtown library, it's essential for the vibrancy.
Yeah, that's better, because that's, that's the point.
It doesn't imply that it's absent.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, what happened to it?
Okay, great. Yes, please.
Seems like we need to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we're all left our offices and whatnot to be here, then instead of just being here for fifteen minutes, I'd rather utilize our time more wisely, so let's do that. And it would be nice to actually see a point on the horizon where this comes together. When I saw the agenda that this was the twentieth work session, it's like, oh, yeah. So let, not, let's not plan for two more hours after, you know, like, three-thirty to five-thirty is our two-hour, not that we start at four to potentially six. Yeah, but continue on this next section, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. No, I think we can get through the rest of this, this section in that period of time, but I think we also need to have some clear headaches. For the week after. Cool, yeah, very good, okay. Okay, well, thank you for everyone, five forty-two, so thank you.
Thank you.
Long meeting, but we are adjourned.